I want to give a little bit of a little leg of the United States of America to the republic for which it stands. One nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. All properly.
Isaac Hill.
Jerry.
Frederick Anderson.
Yes.
Plus the Ashley.
Here.
Plus the Ashley.
Here.
Plus Sway.
Here.
Thank you very much. We are at the point in the agenda where we have two public comments sections. The first one is any item on the agenda. We're pretty interactive in our work session environment here. So if you have something I know there's some trouble from a lot of folks here, you're going to have a good day. And you can either wait until that time and we'll certainly accept it at that time. Or you may make it ahead of time. We are making, there is no votes of anything today, so nobody is passing anything to or of it. So I'll go with whatever your pleasure is. Looks like we maybe have one person, am I correct, on Zoom?
Yep, one person.
So if you'd like to make a comment on any of the twelve agenda items, you can do so now, or you can wait and we can do it under the bone then. And at the end, it's just general public comment. Anything you want to. But what's your pleasure? Crowd, raise your hands if you want to do your, come up now, or you can wait until the issue that you're really interested in. Alright, I think I got my name. Alright, so starting on the agenda, we'll have a building and zoning update. Jason. Morning, Jason.
Morning.
Morning, George. It's a long time. There you go.
May building zoning report. We issued sixteen building permits. Three were new dwellings. Five electrical permits, six mechanic permits, four plumbing permits, one land use, one zoning board of a few. For a total of seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. Things are pretty steady. It's not crazy, but pretty steady right now.
So as you would expect, we're immediately given deep volume for you, you think?
Uh, I think it's probably going to be a little less streaking in the last few years, but, but busier than I anticipated, actually, so.
Board, do you have any questions of? And what's coming to the end of all of them? My, that was, that was my curiousness, how far was compared to the years.
I think last year was a little less than the previous four. Previous four years than last year were bonkers. They were pretty busy, but down a little bit. And then this year started pretty crazy. March and early April were pretty busy, but then it kind of walled. And now it kind of sloughed off.
One question that I have is, you know, I know you issued building permits and they stay open sometimes for certain months and then they're going to do it again. But we have a lot of those out there where people started and then aren't building right now, but having to permit.
We have a few, but not a lot. We have two that have been ongoing for twelve years.
Are you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Really?
You know, but. Stonehouse.
Oh, yeah, the trade.
Yeah, that's, it's continually renewing for dense and renewing and renewing. Okay, then there's one on Sunset, moving down toward the lake.
Hey, hey. Okay. Alright, thanks. I, I, that was finally the question. Anything per report? Anybody in the audience, oh, we're adding to the budget, building, building. I'll see you, Jason. Thank you very much. As always, you don't have to stay for.
Okay.
Alright, very good. Thank you. Number two on the agenda is a warranty update, Ross.
Morning, Ross. Good morning.
Boy, you've got to start bringing some mother, warmer morning.
I tell you what, yeah. Mother nature remains undefeated.
Hey, have you ever had a problem with Zoom?
No, you're, oh. I just lost the TV. You're good. Zoom's good.
Well.
We're, we're zooming. Fine. It's just this display. So you're good to continue.
You'll fix that while we're doing.
Yep.
Uh, well, yeah, as you can see, weather is, the weather's not doing us any favors here. We're down almost sixty percent gas-wise. Memorial Day, we got, Saturday didn't get out of the forties, Sunday barely made fifty. Monday was a lot better, so it's very slow. Uh, all the ramp passes and transient rentals are fairly close to last year, but still down due to the weather, just keeping people away period. Gas pump that we bought last year, that's been installed. There's initial problems with it. Just a little bit of history, three or four years ago, the gas pump was usually posed about twenty feet on that main dock. Too close to the shore. Oh, right. And that time, the, the, the electrical feed was spliced, add additional length to it. You know, that thing gets tugged up and down through conduit, spring and fall, it, it, it's spliced, loosened up a little bit in there. So we had, they were having a little bit of electrical problem with that. With that pump, so we pulled the, pulled the line up. Fixed the splice and, you know, it's, it's, everything's up in there and then everything's running fine since then. And as they were working through that, I just, I just got a quote for just running a, an electrical line of solid line down there, eliminating that problem. And I came in at like nineteen hundred and eighty dollars. Well, everything's, everything's good now, we're just, we'll, we'll probably wait and see. I don't know if we need to do it.
Yes, it depends on if the problem, would you move, right?
Well, the, the, the other option is we can, we can just unwrap that splice every year, check it, and make sure that everything's secure and snug in there. And then I think we can probably get by with that.
How's, what's that splice look like? Does it, you know?
Well.
Need a box or something?
No, it's, it's actually in the conduit, it's inside of the conduit going down from.
In-line, yeah?
And yeah, it's an inline splice.
It's got a bunch of tape on it?
No, well, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's all a fox looking thing and in every, every wire, you know, there's positive, the negative, the, the ground, everything goes into that thing. And it's screwed down. So I think, I think as, as it gets folded and out of that conduit.
Yeah. Is that water sealed box? So who did the work? Prior. So you had it, you had a license.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, that was, yeah, that was, that was two years ago.
Yeah, how many years ago?
It sounded like one of my jobs.
About four years ago. The, the, the pump company, Northern Pump, who does their sols and then, I think they have their pumps. Um, they said, man, nobody likes the place, but everybody has one, you know, it's, it's common. It's not an unusual thing. But we, we, we have to.
Pardon? It passes code.
Apparently, yeah, well, yeah, electrician signs well, but.
What would you do? It sounds like, it sounds like.
Yeah.
I don't know. I think you should look and get the, how you feel.
Yeah, well, I got, I got the quote and I think for the summer, while it's, you know, while it's been tightened up and it's in there, everything's working.
Yeah, how many would God get to it? That's the question.
It's not that bad. It really is. We just, we just have to pull up, um, disconnected from the, the gas pump, pull it up through the conduit. That's probably a day job. Um, I, I, I think, I don't want to micromanage you, I think we're good for the summer.
Don't make me.
Go ahead.
I heard that. I was worried you.
I think with both the process, the rest of, you know, yeah, we just take care of it.
Yeah, you know, that, that, that.
It's within your spending.
Yeah.
It is, yeah. I, I, I think, I think we'll wait till the fall and just, just get it taken care of. We don't have to worry about it, you know, in the future then. The, the, the other part of that is that in the, the clover, the, the point of sale, credit card devices and if we call it a podium down there, that's wired off of the gas pump feed too. So that quote includes separating that, that feed.
Oh, yeah.
So, so it's not always the way that you have. It probably is a good idea at some point to get that straight now.
Next week, so?
Yeah. Okay. Um, other than that, we've just got various, you know, ongoing projects, cleaning the place up, cutting the ground, power washing, replacing new old light fixtures in outdoor, outdoor restrooms. Some will have the old dangling, um, fixtures in there with light bulbs hanging and we're just replacing all that with L and Ds.
Yeah, I know which one.
That's down the bugs, gives us a lot more light and it just, it cleans it up, so. That's about it. The door's been installed, the curtain has finished.
Yeah.
Great job.
I'm happy that doors replaced.
Yeah, that thing, yeah, you can see, you can see the rod of that thing, so we got, we got that done. Um, that's about it.
Okay. Well, we included that in the budget to make sure that everything was interacted. Thank you for getting that completed.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. It's nice, it's nice having, you know, people with different skill sets around too, that we don't have to hire, that's kind of going out.
Also, I guess I'll add that we've been working with you, you know, historically, there would seem to the township. They brought it in, but it wasn't dealt with, semi-monthly. It's done daily on our end. When he brings it in, it's dealt with and we're, we've reconfigured the clover system and so it's being utilized the way it should be.
Yeah.
I believe anyways, and we're working off the bugs, which we had a few, but we get there.
Yeah, yeah, making progress on that.
Probably a little more accountability on part of the employees and on their tie-outs and, yeah, it was a film. And I think that in our time permitting, that we and my deputy mayor are going to make a field trip.
Good.
Take a, take a look at the Muren.
Yeah, you can see what we're, what we're looking at down there. I would take these, our hope that.
Yeah, but now we're, we're in real time receiving and I see the rain, so we're seeing what's going on in the general language. I appreciate that, that was, that was something that you. Makes for better accountability.
Absolutely. Good to work through that and get the, you know, get the system.
He's still smiling. He doesn't move. That's why I made the counter. Call a wife for that. Well.
But, but after leaving that, we do, yeah. We don't want to have to be dealing with that.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. One member's having a delightful time to worry about box.
You keep the household vendors waiting on Saturday.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we got it all down there.
Fine, thank you.
Police department and then here. Um, on the way back to the, the, the check engine, like they bought a truck and it was very much rough, so we got to get that looked at.
You hope you're good. Purchasing, purchasing, back take for the cans right outside.
Uh, well, yeah, I mean, we got.
Go a year back somewhere. We should have gotten our money out of that.
Oh, it's two thousand and eight, I believe.
Very good. Thank you, Ross. Keep up the good work, but you guys are just getting wonderful.
Yeah, well, I'll try, yeah.
Hey, Ross. Keep the shit feeding the pool.
Hard work, mate.
They still, you know, for the.
They're doing.
They are having another look at it.
Okay. Okay, you're better. Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Ross.
Okay.
Morning.
Morning.
Alright, uh, just quick update on the accreditation process. Julie Conover's work on that, she's on chapter three, which is forty standards bond, which is one of the last of the longer ones. Um, and then the next three after that are a little shorter, so she's making really good headway on that. Number two there, uh, this month we purchased Power Policy, which the platform offered to Power DMS, which the Power DMS is both used for the accreditation process. Um, and the Power Policy is, um, the easiest way to explain that, it's like a shared drive that we can put all our policies into. And then if change needs to be made, it's much easier to make changes in the policy. And it's also going to help with the accreditation process for Julie to make things flow a lot more smoothly and faster. Because right now she has to upload the policies and stuff, and then if there's changes being made, she has to want to make changes, whereas all the policies, policies are in the Power Policy, then the changes can be made much easier that way, or added, or cleared, or whatever they can be done. So, um, we got that. So she's kind of focusing right now on getting the policies uploaded into that Power Policy, so they're all in there. And then as she goes through the accreditation process, if a policy needs to be updated or, or changed, she can do that as she's going through the accreditation process. That way, not duplicate any of the work. So, um, we did get that this month and working on that. Uh, number five there, Officer Rodney Mostor, newest officer, he's been, uh, he needs a field training requirements and has been approved for sole control. On, then a, a week or two, and he's got a fine job. Uh, we're really glad to have him. Uh, eight, nine there, we continue to work with police officer cadet Dylan Sherrill, uh, to get him enrolled in the August eleventh academy. I know on June tenth, next Tuesday, he has his physical and written test for the academy. Um, then once he completes that, we will go ahead and submit for the twenty thousand dollar grant to, uh, M. Cole's. So everything's lining up really nice with that. He's excited to get started and, you know, we're excited for him to get started and he's been doing some ride alongs too, and he's getting along with our guys and I think we'll be good there also. Um, number ten there, uh, this month to receive an application from Dallas McBrery, uh, to fill our current vacant police officer position that we have. Um, so I'm looking for the board approval to authorize a conditional offer appointment at the June tenth regular board meeting. To Dallas McBrery, um, he comes from Dent Township Police Department. Uh, he has twenty-six years of long personal experience with most of those years serving as chief of police, or even here, he's been the chief down there. Uh, the initial offer employment is paying the following items, uh, he said, so of the actual M. Cole's paperwork completed, physical and drug testing, background check, and, uh, there's not your board approval. He signed the agreement and he returned it to me and, uh, looking, looking for a start date of July tenth. Uh, like I said, he's a chief down there currently and he wants to have one month to try to get things in mind for them before we just reach. But, uh, he had reached out to me, uh, and he's kind of getting burned out and he just kind of wants to go back to the roots and being a police officer. And I think that would be a good fit for us.
You're going to have a full, full week, you said.
Uh, well, yeah, after, yeah, after, uh, Billy is out of the academy and those are definitely all training young people.
Be in December, we might be a full staff for the first time in three and a half, four years.
Yeah.
Or retirement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, to get that charmed, it's still, it's all, yeah, that's awesome.
I, I, I'm just, he's leaving in good standing. At the township, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, he's, I let the other officers know and he's let the township know also in his board. Um, and yeah, nothing sour or something happened.
Okay.
He's ready for something different.
Well, really good. Were you okay for me to add to that action team tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, I did talk to him yesterday and he's, he, he's going to try to come to the board meeting on Tuesday just to introduce himself and on that later date, we'll do the formal story and stuff. But, um, he thought it would be a good gesture and I thought that would be also, so. Um, so number eleven there, also looking for a spot on the agenda of board meeting, sense promotion of Officer John Ellis uh, to, uh, fill our role of sergeant position, uh, looking for the formal auto office at that meeting and I'll have the paperwork for you to do that. Uh, number twelve there, uh, this month I received a bid from Vern Denon Painting to grab paint, repair, patch, impression, often each year with the department. Uh, just want to remind everybody again that the building is twenty-six years old and, uh.
You just pick up just a little bit.
Yeah, better.
Did you guys hear that back there? I just want to make sure you can hear.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Um. So just want to remind everybody that the building is twenty-six years old and it's furnished, shows some signs the same with, uh, makes some scratches and things in the wall and since the time I've been there, I don't recall it ever being game painted, the interior. I know, uh, Chief Phil at the time had done the garage at one time, but I think that was because the garage, garage was never even painted.
Right.
But, um, and then I think Tom had painted some of the walls, so some of the walls are different colors than the rest of the office and stuff. So, uh, but I did receive that quote from Vern, uh, he's local, he's insured and, uh, comes highly recommended. And, uh, so just looking for the board to approve that project, that's nine thousand six hundred dollars to pay. And that's the whole interior of the building, every room and office, bathrooms and locker rooms also.
I'm curious, I had no idea that Home Depot had any kind of, uh, would you talk to me about that? What is that? A great opportunity at Home Depot.
Yeah, we're currently looking into that. I'm like, sir, I had it through the sheriff's department, was in, I was in there and they were doing a project in one of their rooms. And they said, yeah, we got a grant from Home Depot. So, um.
I didn't know they did that anymore.
Yeah.
So is it like, are they non-profit? Is it?
I think it's for, it's for general governmental.
Government.
And he's, um, Sergeant Ellis has started looking into it.
Okay.
Um, he hasn't found anything online. He got a contact, I gave him a contact through the sheriff's department to reach out to, and then he's getting in contact to Home Depot for that, but honestly, it sounds like it might be, maybe to be able to purchase supplies.
Right, 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 right.
Or, or they'll purchase supplies, but we'd have to have somebody put them in and stuff.
Yeah.
But like at the sheriff's department, they did, uh, their little meeting room and they got flooring, uh, cabinets, uh, refrigerator stove, stuff like that, so, um, there's other things that we've been looking to get in as well.
I don't know if that was an opportunity to help there.
Um, and then with the painting of the, the walls, that's also the point of cabinets and stuff, because we had the old, the looking cabinets and.
And they mom?
Yeah. But just impression those up as well versus replacing all the cabinets, just give them a good weight, hang that, you know. So.
Long shoot.
You, you guys okay with moving?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, just a couple of other projects that we've been looking at already also. Um, on the northwest corner of the building is where all our infrastructure is with our generator well and AC units. Um, I got a quote from Milner Fence Company, St. Helen, who installed vinyl maintenance free privacy fence around that area. Um, and that's cost is three thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. Um. Part of the reason I want to put that fence around there is one for employee safety, allow our employees to exit and enter through the back garage door. And I know over my years, um, you know, I had people pulling in at the parking lot at two in the morning. You know, you don't know if they're hiding around the corner there to ambush here or what they might be doing. Um, and then also it's to protect our infrastructure, because there are some electrical boxes out there that somebody could just come out there and flip them switches. So, um, it'll have a four-foot gate on it, and that will be locked at all times. And then we can still service the generator and, you know, pacing and if it needs to be replaced or something, that, at that time, so. Just another project, uh, looking at you there. Um, and then also I got a, looking to get a quote from Honor Security on updating our criminal system. Um, looking towards technology, it's on third, things like that, so just waiting to hear back on that.
Are you looking, I gotta back you up to your fence, are you looking for that, you know, looking to approval, even though it fits inside and get to it? And spend a lot, and for the audience, so these are all included in the staff's equipment and planning and they'll, they'll use it from last year to this year's budget and moving forward. Um, so he's working off kind of a section that, you know, we kind of had, uh, previous when we did the roof and the new generator, just to refresh that twenty-six-year-old building infrastructure, so. This is not, um, like, shall I say, money that wasn't accounted for to do, it was within budget, so. Are you looking for a motion there from the board to?
I, I wasn't looking for a formal motion, but you guys would like to watch.
You guys, you're, you would want to do one more because we're talking about it, or do you? Honestly, I don't, personally, I tell you, you know, you tell your budget, it's whatever, it's within this family.
Okay, okay. I just kind of want to update on other things that we got you on.
Yep.
Um. We might go from Honor Security to do our cameras, we're lacking some coverage around the building in a couple places. Um, again, that back northwest corner where we entering, you know, we don't have a camera back there. Um, are the parking lots not captured in our front sidewalk and things like that? All of them, so just waiting to have a quote on them, I'm not doing anything regular.
That's, that stands alone with the police department as benefit of this one, if they don't talk things better than that way, no. That system was installed as many, so what I call kind of a, you know, our system here is next gen, if they will, the one that's installed initially. Help with that, I think we did it for a half on the night, then April, somebody got that.
Yeah, I think that was the risk reduction.
Useful, but it's.
But yeah, with the new technology, it's all cloud based and things like that, um, you know, and obviously cameras have more technology. But now looking to replace all the things with, and a couple of things with cameras. Um, things like that, so, um.
Just mislaying, it's not too place, let's go.
Yeah, um, just to be able to capture a whole three sixty of the building, um, and then maybe even a little bit on the road up front with one of the cameras. So, um, and then, uh, we had Bucks Tree Service, mean supervisor, that, um, so waiting to hear back from him, kind of both and to remove. Well, we've got a hundred and twenty foot pine tree that is literally hollow in the middle. I think that's probably thirty to forty feet in the building. So that one definitely needs to come down, um, before we have one bed and then puts holes through the roof. But, um, so just waiting to hear back from, uh, Josh Buck on that. And then there's a couple other smaller trees that were, that is so close to the, the building, but, um. Uh, this quick update on our mobile digital computer systems that we're looking to install in the cars. Uh, we saw Procon, they have all the equipment except for the computers, they're just waiting on those. So as soon as those come in, we'll get, uh, that settled and get that project, uh, moving forward, just waiting on some equipment. Uh, number seventeen there, the Michigan Township Heart Pine Research and Grant Program that we have submitted for the five thousand dollar grant. Uh, got banned news back that we didn't receive the, the money on that, so kind of a long deal, but at least we tried. On number eighteen there, uh, this is just an update on the encryption piece for our radios that we talked about at a couple of other meetings. Uh, our residential station, um, or land mobile radios that have been speaking of dissemination of CGI, it came both Michigan and the FBI, or the land mobile radios must comply with the same requirements for wire communications. Uh, CGI must only be sent, be disseminated to authorized agency, entities, or persons. And CGI must be encrypted with advanced encryption standard AES, important with the uh, CEDIS Bowl, which is the FBI Criminal Justice Information Service Security Policy. Um, as of October first, when coming for the CEDIS Bowl encryption requirement for CGI in transit, both side of the boundaries of a physical secure location, is to employ cryptographic modules that are FIPS one forty-three certified or FIPS validated. Alphamarette, or, uh, symmetric key encryption and decryption. Uh, in either case, a symmetric cipher key of. Uh in either case, a symmetric cipher key of at least a hundred and twenty eight bits required. Since the CEDIS Bowl requirement is in effect and sanctioned by the FBI, the MSP CEDIS audit staff will audit. To the requirement for educational purposes and require written corrective action plans to submit for findings of non compliance. Um however, the lack of CEDIS Bowl referring encryption will not be sanctions imposed by the MSP until October first, one twenty six. Um so with that being said, we began to research the encryption piece with the ProCom out of Mount Pleasant. Uh they are able to do the encryption upgrade on our current mobile and portable radios to meet the requirements mentioned above. Um the total cost for that at this time is eleven thousand seven hundred twenty nine dollars and sixty three cents. Um. I originally was looking for boards to move on that, but I'm gonna hold off on that being sanctioned, sanctionable, go up to this point twenty six, um. But I got it planned in my twenty six, twenty seven budget for that encryption piece, so I'm gonna wait till. After April first of next year to do the encryption, and which should still fill the deadline of the October twenty six. Uh sanctionable piece. Jamie at ProCom said it takes uh forty eight weeks to get the software to crypto radios, and then it's just a matter of scheduling them to come up here and. Uh installing into our radios, and then will we comply with that piece?
So so to say, it's another unfunded manner, which from defense state.
Yeah.
The day food says if you're not being compliant, you have to do additional paperwork. Uh to complete, to say why you're not being compliant moving forward. And the neighbors you have decide whether or not you have radio communication with the the state circuit, right?
Right. And uh talking with other agencies and department heads, um think we're pretty lucky that we're able to encrypt the radios that we have. Because a new radio, from what I'm hearing, is around fifty five hundred dollars and we had.
For encryption model, no, for a new radio.
Because the radios. Um we have. Four, I think four old portable eight hundred megahertz radios that we have. Um I have one at home that I listen to.
Yep.
Um those radios aren't able to be encrypted.
Right.
Um where, but our new ones that all the officers carry and ones that we have in our patrol cars, they're all able to be encrypted.
Very bad, right?
Yeah, yeah, so we're fortunate that we have newer radios and we can encrypt them, because we would be looking at a bill of. Over sixty thousand dollars for new radios and. So.
The good were to replace those Apexes and mobiles when we did a few years back.
Yeah.
Um so now we're in a position to just do the encryption.
Right.
Um. Ahead of the curve, which is where you wanna be with the state.
Yeah. And that 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 will fall online really good with our um lean audit. Um we should try to get audited that year in November, December. So when they come into our audit, we'll build a show then that we have that PIPS one forty three certificate that our radios are encrypted. And we provide with the. Same, so.
That must be where the state's getting ready to punch a check for all this money.
It's in the mail, Joyce. It's in the mail.
So yeah, any other questions on that?
No, other than what that means to scanner land, if y'all have eight hundred megahertz scanners, you will hear it anywhere.
Right.
Uh you won't hear police traffic.
Yeah, it's only the lead channel that has to be encrypted, it's not the private channel, but you're still able to hear. The regular radio traffic, you just won't be able to hear people's name when they're on a traffic stop.
Well, that's a good thing, I'm really glad to hear that.
If you set up an encrypted call on not not lean channel for. Any purposes, you use encryption on other than lean channels?
No, it would just be the lean channel.
Is that the only thing that the radio is capable of then, is just the lean channel or is it? No, you switch to a different talk group that's um, you know, not a lean channel.
No, we have, we have our primary channel, which we can talk to all the other, yup, county units, state units and the county.
It's called, can you do an encrypted call on those channels?
No, that that channel will be encrypted.
You have people's names, dates of birth uh that are are supposed to be.
I guess what I was getting at was if you had a covert. Call you wanted to make, could you switch over to a talk group?
Well, we have our own private channel nine four six. Yeah, you, yeah, we could encrypt all the channels, but it comes out of cost.
Okay.
So encryption module that goes in and only applies to certain channels?
To that one channel.
Yeah.
If I get stopped and I go speeding. And I'm on my way to work and I get here and everybody already knows about this, that won't continue to happen, so I think it's a great thing.
Well, there's no. When this is about the year in June, the eighteen month. That would be in.
Yes, well, yeah, well, yeah, we had that budget already done, so it's, we we better add forty percent of it. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Um. Number twenty there, uh just wanna follow with the builder, I did talk to Russ about the um. Pump at the marina, in the event that there was an emergency, like we had uh this last. Spring, early spring, I guess you would call it, with ice storm, you know, power. Uh we did reach out to uh Northern Pump Services and received a price on a Billwright hand pump kit. For the amount of two hundred and forty five dollars, um that would allow us access to fuel. In an emergency, if we need it for the plate, please fire N E M S. Um and if you're not familiar with the hand pumps, I'm sure it's dangerous, but um you know, you stick it in the tank and hand crank it and then. Hold it up, it will hold as any can.
Manual slicing, basically.
Yeah, um which is basically all we've been needing, because we don't have power, so you can't run a power pump or nothing.
I ran into that problem in Northern Michigan.
Yeah.
Yeah, just services were driving.
Yeah, just for the audience, um at the Northern Chiefs meeting that I attended um in the spring. A lot of the northern chiefs that were involved in the ice storm. Uh finding the issue with not being able to get fuel for patrol cars and changing the operations, they had to go to other cities. How far to get, so we're just kind of trying to be proactive um here in township, and we have our own mobile. Resource at the marina that in an emergency like that, that we could tap into, um. So I just wanted to see if the board was okay with us purchasing that in the little pump and. If that ever happened, we could.
Absolutely.
Use that to go out to the marina.
That's great.
I presume that come with the training component, right?
Yeah. Yes, it's quite simple, Ross Hines will show me, but I mean, we'll definitely, you know, train with the department and the PD staff. So if everyone's all right with that, I think we'll get that to review. Alright, thank you. Uh number twenty one there, uh Officer Moles received his new Volcuit vest, uh we just got the invoice for it yesterday. And when we submit more the fifty percent reimbursement grant that we did, it will be um. Little over three hundred and fifty dollars back that we get from that vest.
Uh that would be used.
Yep. Uh just keep in mind that that um reimbursement takes quite a while to do that grant. So um but we'll get the paperwork going and stuff on that. Uh number twenty two there, uh we did receive two of our uh. Two out of the four long guns that we ordered, um there were the two shotguns we received, those were still in the two ARs. Um that were replacing due to the product viability of our old firearms being seventeen years old and fourteen years old. So um just waiting on the other two to come for that. Uh number twenty three. We had, we held a coffee with cop uh at the West Side two hundred market cafe. Uh we had a great turnout with officers and civilians and board members, so I thank everybody for coming and uh. Alan Jane Spencer for hosting that for us, I think it was really good turnout and it's always a great time to get out and talk with people. Uh. Twenty four there, uh Sergeant Ellis attended the. Twenty twenty five Great Lakes Homeland Security Training Conference in Expo School, Track Development, Grand Rapids. Uh it provided a wide array of workshops geared toward improving security and safety in Michigan schools. Along with learning how to prepare to address the many potential threats and situations someone faced with their school environments, well-received resources, uh programs. And interventions available to improve school safety. Uh he said it was a really good conference, I went there with some of the school staff and uh. It was a good, good training opportunity for him. Uh just really quick on the S R O position, uh I I know I discussed it earlier, that we're looking at. Continuing in that program after the grant went out. Um and my plan is to see uh Sergeant Ellis in the schools at beginning of the year, I wanna have some consistency with. Um the same person being in there, you know, we started the program with uh. Don White-Bernick in there and then he retired, obviously, and then we got John Ellis in there. But I wanna have him in there for another year, just so there's some consistency, and then we'll probably look at somebody else going in there and do that. Um. Uh Sergeant John Ellis attended a three day first line supervisor class at Delta Community College uh to help him as a. Uh role patrol sergeant, uh timing worked out good that they had the class available there, so um sent him to it. And uh said, I know a good training that he had. Uh Lieutenant Labonte graduated from his five month long Command Number One A R training course. Uh offered through Shield Leadership, so that was a good class for him to attend. Uh Officer Ellis attended the Where's Army and assisted at now presenting the scholarships that were awarded. Uh this year, Act Now only received three apps, normally they see receive a lot more and they only give all two scholarships. Being they they received only three apps, they just awarded all three applicants. Um the thousand dollar scholarship, so um there was three lucky people this year instead of two. Um. Uh this month we held the traffic safety meeting uh at the P D for the Higgins Lake Sunrise Run. Uh marathon, ten K and five K, it's scheduled for Saturday, June fourteenth. Uh that starts at the North State Park and goes down to the South State Park, uh meeting went well, everything's in line. And that's uh next Saturday, uh June fourteenth. So if you see cones up on the road and things like that, uh that's what will be going on. Uh. Thirty five there, we were finally able to get our Act Now. Uh Gears Township Police Department Road Clean Up uh accomplished, we had to reschedule a couple times due to the weather with the rain. Without we're gonna have to do it again, but uh we were able to squeeze in when you collected nine bags. I had eight bags there, but it was actually nine, you didn't realize one was down on the corner. So we got that picked up, but it was nine bags of garbage this year and uh the the picks were pretty bad too, so. But um. We had the staff in those months to discuss the ordinance enforcement, ORB enforcement, parking hotspots. Holding cases in summertime issues like fee fifty six where frame rates are in a short trespassing. Uh being that we have some newer officers, I wanna bring them up to speed on that and uh. Think we'll have a good summer. Uh to date, we've issued thirteen decrements and uh we continue to monitor their placement, and pretty much all of them were out. Then the last item there, number forty one. Uh looking for some board action on this, uh we continue to plan for the Fourth of July this year. Um and last year we did the temporary traffic control order. Um which put up the no parking signs basically from McKenzie to the Cut River. And then of McKenzie from one hundred to the existing no parking. Um we found that to be beneficial last year on the Fourth of July and uh. That was just a temporary traffic control. So and they only did it for this, the three holidays. Um so what I'm looking for and asking them to attach a letter and everything to get to the uh missionaries meeting platform. Is just to request that to be year round instead of the three entries that it was. That wouldn't stop signs would just be up throughout time, they're not taking them down.
So it's motion to request Ross Townes County Road Commission. To.
To have the temporary traffic control order.
You can make year round, make the.
Temporary.
Temporary. D C O. Deployed at the park. Around Countyville one hundred.
Mm-hmm.
And state part of the area. Um the year round, what I heard?
Yes.
Were you okay with? Any discussion on that here?
Uh.
Full length of McKenzie. All the way to the end.
Yeah.
Both sides of the road.
Well, since now trails back to almost the Cut River, because that's what happened on all these events, I mean, start right. Going all the way up to the Cut River, or sometimes in the Cut River or parking lot, uh you you know, I thought it was at the both sides of McKenzie.
Yeah.
Ninety five, we were somewhere. Okay, uh so we'll add that in for a motion to approve the letter we sent out to the back.
Yeah, and we do, we do have two visual signs that we're replacing out there also this year. Trying to put up one uh at the start of the little parking on Curved there, the South State Park, um. You know, just before Nipples and the old fire station there, um. And then we're, we'll put another one down by the Cut Rivers. A visual sign that we're, uh the state parks can borrow from their other park up in Grayling, but um. So we're, we're planning, we're trying to do that, you know.
Yeah, that's right, you put up an old parking sign, you take it to another location, because it doesn't stop them, that's for sure, but. It does, it does give you some ability there to make a difference, and if the court decides to. We can charge more money on parking tickets to make it a real detriment, but unfortunately, people do those no parking, those are. They pay fifty dollars to co-merit, and they've been on the watch of time, you know. You know, pay to find a fifty dollar, fifty five, or whatever it is, it's feeling time, so which is not near, in my opinion, it was, you know, nothing, nothing.
Yeah.
Uh okay, anybody else, more, do you have any other question, Eric, uh uh he gives a very nice article in the report, and good to see there's nothing going on. She will pay you for nothing. Uh anybody, audience? All right, uh let's see, buddy. Up there, right, we're good, thanks chief, alright, thank you too. And for number uh, what is that, okay, fire, fire, you know that, by a big nice. By morning positivity and light sunshiney uh. Which I appreciate it.
Good morning.
Thank you.
So uh first of all, uh I noticed a mistake on my report, I put April twenty twenty five and May for twenty five. I don't know what happened in May, I don't remember May at all, um so that's. Uh we've been on calls this month, there's been kind of higher along with you. Nothing out of the ordinary, just more, I guess it starts getting a little busier sooner. So uh we have done ten initial eight calls this month, I'm not just relying, we've done Mark B and Adrian's as well. Uh we've done fires with other departments. We have ran more fire calls this year, one of my, I think we ran probably the last thing or two, so now we put it by. Um our department, our crews have participated in one hundred and thirty five total hours of training this month. So we got the boat in the water, uh they took the rescue max for the help, so we'll take that and get the dock in for us, so we had some um. Boat operations this month, training on the boat. Um our drone, our flight drone, flight. Uh staff has been working on the drone, doing some flight hours, uh having it up in the air, working and doing some freshman stuff. Um actually went to that township as well and they're training for them, so they understand what our drone is capable of. Uh and I think Lake Township wants one, so they can see what it's capable of too, so they're gonna do that as well. It's good training for them too, so they can get some flight hours in. Um we are doing monthly EMS continuing education credits still for Marky, um we're working on that, making sure we have a good schedule. So that's new. Uh I'm doing craft center walkthrough. Last week, it's kind of free plan for incidences, like layouts and access, uh. I think Assistant Chief Roger and I are gonna meet with ten of them, chief there and Assistant Chief Grace. Uh I think Assistant Chief Roger and I are gonna meet with ten of them, Chief there and Assistant Chief Grace. We're gonna do an actual pre-plan of that building, um so that if something were to happen, you know, we're gonna be there. Either before they are or right the same time, so I want to make sure we're gonna be on the same page as how we're gonna facilitate that big structure. See what else, uh we attended the business expo at the uh Craft Center this year, that was. Owned by the Higgins Lake Community or Chamber of Commerce, that was pretty good, um we had a lot of people come up and talk to us just to. Say hi and admire me in the face out there, so that was fun. Um we escorted the seniors back in town, they went to private graduation for the night and. Uh the staff and the boss were like, hey, let's do one more so they can have their final. Uh escort back in, so we did that, um there's the Sheriff's Department and Higgin's Township firing, I'm also participated in that, I don't need. Uh what's not on there, which we did, was later, um baseball, boys. Bars of between one districts this year, um. Don't know where it came from, they're four and fourteen record and they blew districts out of one, like it was great. Um so we guys sort of got back in town too, they uh. So actually we had more, we had all the following departments, plus we had uh South Branch Township also with trucks. Uh we went through town, it was a great day, I actually called the Irish Kill and told them that you were coming through, so they had everybody out of the patio and. Chair for the bus when they came through, so that's kind of exciting. Um meetings and monthly meetings. Um it's pretty much the same ones we normally go to, not a whole lot more exciting. Uh we did host the uh Ross Town and County Fire Association meeting and the Ross Town and County Fire Chase meeting at our department. Uh it was a pretty good turnout, we had the state fire investigator here that did a presentation on visiting preservation and. Stuff for us to look for and pay attention to and how to get a hold of them. Uh we also got to meet with uh. Neighbors United, which was the cancer thing that I showed you guys last month, um they are going to be having an event here in Ross Town and County. It's gonna be the weekend of June twenty-seventh and twenty-ninth. Um we have offered to help with the pancake breakfast at Lion doing on. Saturday morning, and we're also going to be hosting a lunch stop for them. Uh we're gonna get a case today that our association pays for that. Um and the lunch table, we're gonna have donations only, whatever donated, we're gonna give back to uh Neighborhood United to help with their fund. We're also participating in the Sunrise Run, we'll have staff there, um we also sponsored a first aid and water station, so that's gonna be different for us. Uh for this, it's a fun time, it's like Christmas for me, I enjoy it every year, I don't ever miss it, so we're gonna have our trucks down at the park. And staffing that. Uh up twenty minutes, we do have our open house, it is scheduled for August ninth, I'll have more details probably next month on that. Uh oh, so our, our boat is back in service, like I said, it's out of dock. Um it runs great, it's working great, we're trying to get all our staff, friends up on that. Uh two twenty-five is back in service, we had to replace the. Boat around that, um auto recycle already did an amazing job. Uh hands down, they got it to us within days, they worked on it, they got the part in and um I actually brought them cookies with this. Or it's, we were an inspired from that, I can't hear. Uh mid-fire one two class is now complete, uh out of the seventeen people in the class, sixteen of them passed written and all seventeen passed practical. Also, that was pretty good, right, and you did an amazing job with that. Uh we do have uh two people that came through the applications, we did contact, they're interested in part-time paid-on-call. On firefighters, uh Steve Armstrong's one, um he works for Selfridge, he's the E M T. And he is a firefighter, he's. Fire officer certified, fire officer one, fire inspector, fire instructor, E M T. Um C P R instructor and E M S instructor too, so he comes with a lot of qualifications. Uh he actually came in. Last year and yearly four to our open out and uh thought, hey, please, I'm up there, it'd be really nice to kind of join the department. He lives on the west side of the lake, his family lives here, his wife's a school teacher his whole life and his uh daughter goes to. Collins in Old Lake as well, uh so he's interested in something on call part-time. Uh another one that we have is Reese Smith, a younger kid. Uh oh, he is not an E M T, he hasn't had any, any right now, he's just looking for something different. Our recruitment retention seems to be working, we're getting a lot of uh. Fire release, but these two are pretty interesting, so I'm kind of looking for board approval, we're on agenda for Tuesday for hiring of these two. Okay, we've done a background check on vocal movement back time, um so pending the uh. Physical and drug screen, that would be my recommendation.
Your name, your gender.
Uh Steve Armstrong and Reese, not Reese.
Reese.
R E C.
I know I saw, I know I saw, I was looking for a motion. They're both gonna be a.
Did you say Reese is not in the E M T?
He's not, I don't know where that even came from, again, I. It's probably because I don't know where the month of May is, so.
There, and then the number one to motion. Will approve. Reach, okay, continue on.
Um special needs awareness training that I talked about last month, um it looks like this won't be fully funded. My rent is healthy, fund half of it, emergency management's providing funding for as well, and four is interested in sponsoring arrest, so that sounds like it's fully. Uh funded, so that's gonna be really nice. That's gonna be a nice homework, I'll have more information on that, and that someday. Other than that, it's just been a busy month, um we've been at our officer meetings, we're trying to figure out how to restructure. Our officer corps a little bit changed. Um we know we're going to restructure, we just haven't quite figured out how most well yet. That's where we're at, trying to figure. Other than that, we did not get to be roasting up either because of weather, we're doing that tonight, so that's where we're at.
No questions? Any questions? Listen, next, Kristy.
All right.
Anybody else have any, uh Bernie's decided? I was very well, I don't see any, thank you, Christie, you took the good work. Christie's a very active guy, and he's always positive and great work. That's what we need, you know, doing that full activity, so. All right, we're on to number five, I'll just give you Bernie's offbeat on the Glua dissolution. And I'm hoping this basically fast signifies it's the last update, uh and. I was having a meeting with council on Monday, uh to. Uh I did offer a letter on behalf of Gears Township to. Ask for, we asked for the previous resolutions, which there were about five levels, uh. That are, that the attorneys need to continue towards a proper dissolution, a corporation of Glua. Uh and the Glua board did and uh sent uh. Data back that we needed, that's all been forwarded to our council. Uh I, I don't know about the status of Lion Township, but Gears remained mayor. Uh to, and we've done everything that we do to this date, we're waiting on Lionson for. Their decision of dissolution, uh. I haven't, I don't know, there was even a board member, a board member, no. There was an article in the Resort yesterday, I'll get the digital, and they did pass a resolution. To move forward.
Lion did, my township?
Yeah, it's last meeting immediately. Oh, you got it. All the terms preferred that the board members do their according. Was I talking about kind of what I had, but um they did vote for one to. Move forward with the resolution.
They had to send it to both.
I think, I think Bertram made the motion, then he voted against it, I think this is.
Thank you.
I, I, as you, as you know from my previous statements, we do some, you know, Lion has a brand-new board, entire five, we have three. Three, it's a place, don't you? You know, change your, all, I'll be, okay. But at, at, at that election, but um. I, I continue and will always make this statement, Lion Township, uh we've got to give them room to get their feet, uh and figure their board postures. Uh they, uh and, and so when I act like I don't know, I really don't know, because I'm not making inquiries as the. As the council supervisor as to what their status is offered, so I read them for different bodies like this. So that they can do their, their, their thing, I know they attended their meetings, uh. And uh so we were waiting for that, and I'm happy to hear that that is heard. And so that, that appears like we might be one step closer. Um and uh and the plan for Glua, if you will, the. The five different things that we, we outlined, there was actually six in the resolution that I knew they had accomplished, one for sure, but. So those things look like they have occurred now, um I did receive a signed letter. Uh from, by Jim Barnwell, uh that went to the E P A to formally unhook the. Uh I guess whatever their process is, uh that, that came from an email back in April where that was. Advised that that was needed, but there hasn't been any action taken back in April until the, so that's the other. And I had one, you sure can, or two, I, I had a phone call from Phil Che, uh the captive that needed the last meeting. And um he posed the question um regarding. You know, they have a lot of requirement which they fulfill per request. Uh which is in their own bylaws, so they're only expensive since that they spend. I think maybe a lot of their, and maybe some other miscellaneous items. Uh there was a discussion within the Glua board about having another audit. Considering the, I've told the facts and circumstances, my recommendation was him. With them, ask Lion Township, ask this board to create. Let's say a committee, which could be the two treasurers, to review their activity to. Through the end, rather than go through another costly audit. As long as the two townships are in agreement with that, and then the only last thing that they've got to consider is. How to distribute the remainder of the money to whom, which that's not what I would. That's not. The role that that committee would look at is just to make sure that they fulfilled what they. Said they were gonna do, not tell them what to do, but literally just. Review it to make sure that that in fact is what happened, and then close the, that chapter on. And, and although our attorney and uh my understanding, Lion attorney as well. They have a, they have indicated. How they would like to see that, what they had in mind, taking care of. Now, I don't know if, uh. I don't think there's any different thoughts on the attorney's decision of thoughts, um that I'm not sure that's something we as. Even constituent township, we should bottle our plenty of bugs. That's something we should as board members decide to get involved in. Right, all, all I, all I would suggest, whether it's me or somebody else, whether it is a township, and then somebody from their township. Is only to make sure that they did what they said they were gonna do with the money, and then report that to the respect of the townships and be done with it.
Can I incur another thousand dollars and have another audit?
Well, all we just thought really was uh. A very restrictive, it was very specific, it was only to, to, to. Audit as to the fact of what money went in and out of the accounts. And uh and verified how much money was still there, it wasn't a. It wasn't a comprehensive audit that you would generally hit like at the township here, and then, so it would be costly and useless. Thanks, Frankie, this. Not that much. So anyways, that's like conversation within case that in fact of Glua. As a request, also I understand the, I think I heard, but there was some discussion that the last rule more to the. There were some numbers there, thought maybe we did retain an attorney that itself for collusion. Uh and I. Still have a question of saying that, but I, but nonetheless, um their boards make whatever suit.
It's also on your current agenda whenever you come probably do.
And so more to come on that, I'm just not really sure. Can you just read this paragraph a little farther along here, so. After a series of attempted motions, Bertram made a motion, seconded by Detner, that Lion Township withdraw from the Glua and begin dissolution immediately. Motion carried four to one, Bertram casting a no vote. Bertram then made a motion for the township to adopt the dissolution plan. Recommended by its attorney to further the dissolution of Glua at a special meeting on June fourth. One A supported the motion clarifying that all board members would have conned with the resolution. But Perron was about to take roll, roll call vote, but Detner said he wanted to look at the resolution to discuss it on June fourth. If everybody's good with it, we can pass it. Um Bertram withdrew his motion. For republicans, so, so maybe I don't know what. Yeah, I know they passed, the, the board passed it four to one to, to um. Well, it's not to move over the dissolution, but I think they've, they're still. Trying to figure out just what that, what that looks like. And because I've been uh called by the attorney thing from Glua, um I did offer uh Jim Barnwell as a parent and Jim Moss also was there. Um that he could um, you know, come to. Uh our attorney if he would like to ask you questions that he might have or otherwise, um and uh I, you know, whether you're. It's accepted.
Yeah, it is, yeah, it's up, yeah.
Uh and so we are meeting with our attorney on June ninth, which is Monday at ten thirty in the morning, so. Um and uh so I, I, I get, I don't know what the issue might be for Glua and an attorney, other than. Hey, listen, they're a board and uh, you know, I'm sure they want to make sure that they're. You know, as much, as much of the, you know. The, the community involvement to defend, to, 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 from solid, they go around themselves, I don't know. It's something like, doesn't want to see the. Yeah, on that piece, yes, but I'm talking about probably getting their own. Uh, oh, I think, I think that we, that you can help me recall or anybody out there. We have attended, I believe it was um. Mr. Cook?
Yeah, it was.
And who's the other one? That wanted, that thought maybe that they should seek an attorney. Was it, was it supervisor, oh, in that role, wasn't it? That's all we can tell you the data for. And if, we might want to take just a quick five minutes real quick, because we're really gonna get into the guts of this thing here, this surely. Uh for uh board members who want to take a quick five minutes, like then we'll start off with uh. Everybody that doesn't go back to the topic, we'll start off with Ms. Seemack uh for the party, that's okay. Remember that?
Yep.
Uh I think we'll stay for a quick five minutes, uh we'll be back, we'll be back at uh ten fifteen, right?
You have a microphone.
Yeah. We could uh get back in session here. Very good, Susan, you wanna come on up?
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Get my long page signed. Okay, um so it's uh just a couple of quick highlights. Regarding the five-year recreation plan, I think we have a good plan in place now to accommodate a public hearing at your board meeting on Tuesday. So again, I think that will go very fine, I would be surprised if there were any comments, as of a week ago, there was nobody in the. Email to Mary Jo still, so we have offered since April seventeenth for people to give comments at uh parksywork@horosontic.com. So none have come in there, I'd be surprised if much happened, we have a public hearing, but um that will be a good opportunity. And then you can move to the resolution, and Michelle, I had sent you a draft resolution.
I know, it was pretty good, yeah. I, it's completely, perfect, yeah.
And you got the typo date on the seventh.
Yeah, it will let you look at it for us today, yeah.
Um so going on to the Gears Township Park, we did have our little reopening party on Saturday, May twenty-fourth. Uh I call it light attendance. It was very cold that day, uh people were in jackets, but we did have uh about. Eighteen adults and I think nine children uh coming through, so I really appreciate Mary Jo and Jim also showing up and we had uh. Four of the five parts of our committee people there. And ten questions, Jill Baker was there, so that was very nice. Um and uh also the resort was there, but didn't have time to get an article in last newspaper, so it should be in June fifth, should be in these weeks. Uh drinking fountain. Uh, drinking fountain was installed on the outside of the bathrooms. It looks really nice. And we, we discussed benches for inside, but we haven't quite ordered them yet. Sand was delivered and spread. It was really nice. There was two loads there, so that'll be about fifteen hundred dollars. I have not seen the final invoice yet. The movie mat, I want to mention very quickly, I did talk to a couple of you individually. We're gonna revise the design of that. Instead of putting the movie mat straight out of the, of the sand, we're gonna extend the boardwalk past the gazebo for the woods and then we'll be mapped on that side of the sand instead of right down the middle. So I have, um, the Parks Committee is, um, have, has designed that and will use Mary Jo's credit card to buy those boardwalk extension pieces and will volunteer to put that labor in to finish that work. And then the movie mat will extend from there. It's gonna be about the same price, maybe a little bit less than the thirty-three hundred dollars originally approved, um, a month ago. Um, and we are still waiting for the road commission to get on those two large stumps, but I know that you've been in touch with them.
Talked to them yesterday and, and, uh, they think they're just gonna come in and when they do it, they're gonna stump them. Which I think is the right thing to do also. So, but he didn't commit to be the man of your day in the time.
Correct. Okay. Um, regarding the municipal park here, I am in the process of getting quotes for the, um, surfacing under the plate equipment. The, uh, play structure and the swings. And, um, attached for your review, I also attached to that, we nailed a, um, court rules. He said paper that, uh, was put together by a little subcommittee of what I'm calling resident player advocates. We met um, last week and really hashed through a lot of things to improve minor things at the court and to come up with these court rules. So I submit them to you. If they all make sense to you, or if you want to discuss, I think eventually we should have a page like this posted. I'll post this in paper initially, until we get a part signed and then we'll post that on offense.
I do have a question. I, unless I just missed it, when I read through this, uh, the last thing I hear reads, you know, tennis on court during pickleball open play hours. Where are those stated?
Um, right under pickleball open play rules, it says scheduled open play is noted on the team reach app. So they, it, it, they're modified. We don't, we need to have the flexibility to modify when open play is, but they are stated. If there's, anybody can see it on the team reach app. Well, if they're not on there and their tennis player that comes up and it happens to be during that time and the courts are full and a tennis player comes up. We just explain to him, this particular hour has been
You haven't had that happen, right?
I have not had that happen.
I don't foresee that happening either, I don't think.
Uh, the only time I see tennis players up there is like, um, really busy times, like holidays and families come up sometimes, wanna play tennis. I don't see tennis as much.
No.
But we, we will accommodate that if tennis comes up.
I'm just wondering if there's something other than just an app, you know what I mean? Like, I don't know, cause I don't, I don't read that as clear. And I read these rules, I'm like, okay, well, where did it say where the hours were?
The app for pickleball is a very common national approach to playing under the ball courts. So it's used in other states for pickleball. I don't know how tennis players communicate, but tennis players can use this app to.
Okay.
It's, it's free.
I understand, no, I understand.
Derek Shander, by the way, played.
I'm thinking of the people who maybe don't, but you're probably correct in stating that the same people who are playing pickleball can do it now, can do it, and that's how they do, so.
And just suggesting too that, um, I have a schedule on there for the month of June. We're just gonna play this by ear and see how things develop and how the local people play. There's many other court opportunities around us and I know people play it many other places. So, uh, these rules can be, uh, we can put them up just in paper this year if you want. We, if we love them, we can make them out of sign for next year, so.
The real key is just being a common courtesy, a respectfulness, but it's no different any place you show up, that's a public area. If you're there, try to get done as quick as you can. You try to accommodate people that are coming in and just be neighborly. That's, that's brilliant.
Play nice and
All plays by a good spot. Well, it's true. I like the idea of not putting on print for a permanent sign for a while and see what happens. Cause I do understand what you're saying. If you don't, if you're not familiar with team rage and you're a tennis player and you show up like you did last year, when we watched people on there, just.
Yeah.
What are you always saying? What would you do if everybody was playing tennis the other way around? You just don't play here.
Or you come back in and how it
Or you come back and how it works.
Yeah.
Exactly. No, good job.
Okay, so on the rules, um, and the Parks and Rec budget, I just wanted to mention, and you guys probably already know, Mary Jo and I did meet with Jim last week. We had a really good meeting and understand how all this budgeting goes and then we're, we're fine for this year. We're keeping kind of a line item, um, tracking of our budget. Including the new locks that we went in that I didn't anticipate, but we're, we're fine with that. Um, I wanted to say that, um, there was this T-Mobile grant opportunity that Brian you sent around um, a month ago, and it's, it's, it's a neat opportunity, but it calls for a shovel-ready project. Parks Mark doesn't really have one of those right now, so I'm not gonna pursue it immediately. They will keep my eye on it in case it's a dirty thing that they do. And, um, I also just wanted to put out in the stratosphere about maybe the next big thing we do is we're finishing up the park at Carlos. It seems like the next big thing that the township needs and people have been commenting on is a, is a bathroom in this facility here. So, um, we're gonna do a little bit of planning and scouting and estimating and deciding if we back. That's where the public wants to go, maybe get some grants into.
Um, may want to get with myself or Jim Anderson. Um, we have some thoughts as well.
Right.
That might help, um, and, uh, as we move forward with infrastructure that is needed, we might be able to combine, um, do something in that direction. Okay?
Any questions?
I think, maybe I just forgot. Wh- wh- where's the status of the pump out on the subject of that part? Is there any news that's said?
I, I, I've received nothing back from, um, Scott's on the stuff.
Gave them, go ahead and do that.
You wanna follow through with calling Danielle, that's fine, um. The idea, I, this, this, I can do it according to, um, they, they have done the, finally the township called one here and waiting back for the inspection results on that. I did chase down, uh, Scott's had many old pictures, uh, or shall I say the last time that it was pumped, uh, that uh, I wanna get those, I think those need, there need to go to the health, I think, as well, um, Jim. The data on that subject piece of our own infrastructure, so. But that's the last thing yet down there is we're just waiting for them to pump that. The water came back, uh, water test came back fantastic. I know problems, uh, from the health department. We're on a, a now seasonal contract, as we will with them. It's type two water well and should have been being tested quarterly, if you will, at a minimum. It will now be for the future, um, and but our well is fine, uh, for the water, looks good. And they'll come in there and test it, uh, in the terms of the contract. And then they send the results in my office, which I then send, uh, give to Earth, the place in permanent file, so the next people that came along could go walking, find what they need in that file.
That sounds great. I was just gonna say, I'm gonna call Danielle today about the surfacing. You want to comment about it? Okay.
We asked them to go ahead and, and, uh, proactively pump that, because it's been too long. And, uh, and, and then we also asked them to treat it as if we were asking for an inspection, uh, if you will, there are the things that have detail in inspection. Because we're absent of criteria for inspection yet. But we want to at least have a good look at it in order to get filled with, uh, with black, so. Yeah, if you, 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 oh, so much thinking. No, I think it's good. I, I do want to say, uh, you just sent us all an email, uh, about minutes or whatever there. Um, I, I don't have any problem getting minutes monthly, you know, for me, the one page is fine, but there are board members that like to see the monthly minutes of yours, but what I don't wanna confuse here is you are not subject by open meeting deck, nor are we going to publish those out to every known site on earth. So that people can look at those minutes, if you will. But if you wanna keep sending those so that board members at least can open them up and take a peek monthly and satisfy their whatever, that's fine, but I just wanna make sure that you understand, the committee understands. And that the public out here now on our YouTube show after we're done understands that those are not required to be questioned and we will not be doing so. If people want to look at them, they can come to your Parks and Recs, uh, committee meetings. We, we do appreciate, um, what you're doing. I, I know we've been, like, everything is a touch for, but we're looking through understandings for process and we appreciate everybody's patience in doing so. More notes, anything else for Susan? Okay, Tom Barber, I guess I could tell he could slap them. Tom was agreed to come here today. I, I, so, somehow the rummage and words got out about, uh, the short-term rental ordinance, and I'm afraid people think that we're like, we're, we're voting on ordinances right now, we're not. What we are doing though is working through, once again, a process. So with the process, I invited Tom to come here. The planning commission started working on this quite a while ago. Uh, and fitted in between all the rest of the very busy times of the, that they've had with storage units and, and different type, uh, pieces that they worked through and, and in, in they sent this to the township board, a series of paperwork that was in a package here. And it is, uh, resented in March, Jim Osseling, you were on vacation in April during meeting times. And, uh, in May was a really, really busy meeting, uh, uh, piece for work session. So here we are. Uh, I wanna hesitate at the floor, Tom, and kind of, I guess, frame this stuff for us if you'd like. Well, I'm looking for questions from you on the ordinance. I understand that. If, uh, I don't know how you wanna proceed from there. Do you wanna go line by line, or do you wanna do a, but you've done a pretty good summation job, uh, on, on this stuff, um, that talks about, why don't you go through the key factors? Uh, that you document, that was put together for the short-term model vacation. Uh, vacation rentals, uh, several key factors that are justified, uh, in the planning commissions documents. Shortly regulation of Well, you wrapped the ordinance. I think the definition's absolutely clear. I don't know if you have any follow-up of those or anything, um, but the, uh, these are the key factors. Well, for you to implement this ordinance, probably some of the things you wanna have before you do that would be, do a study and a search and find out just how many properties are operating as well. That would give you an idea of the impact that's taking place in the area or potential in that, and how much, uh, the locations, um, are actually out there. There's a couple of ways you can do that. You can search the township, uh, by using, looking at the hosting website, such as everything in the means. VRBO, um, it's listed. I did that when we first started this, that I wanted to get an idea on my own with a computer and should. The issue with that is the properties will be listed possibly as both, so. So if you're comping, you might get double, you know, it's time to be super active, but it'll give you an idea of where they're at. Just like using your internet and the, um, and, and roughly how many there are. When I did my study, I came up with seventy. Um, and there's, you know, I was there faster than that. There in, that were on the online that I could find and, and go through. The other way you can do is you can use your BSA software, like identified property owners. There's vendors out there, um, there's one called Better Technologies, and they specialize in software for these type of things. Um, don't know what it costs or anything like that. But, uh, you can, you can subcontract and essentially, and, uh, they contacted Michelle back in, uh, two thousand twenty-four. From Solicitor Business and they came up with a hundred and forty-four listings. Don't know, again, how accurate that is.
Is that Irish, Irish line?
They got, they have a program they call Rent Speed. So once you kind of gather that information, our thoughts were that, um, you know, you wanna look at your resources required for budget purposes, um, what it's gonna take to implement the, the ordinance and, and roughly the annual cost to administer. The, uh, I think what the Senate, you, we won't have a, a lot of administration to do other than renew licenses and so forth. Um, one of the things we, uh, recommend is that you just, as a license issue, just don't do it all on one day. Do a massive applications come in and then your renewals are scattered throughout the year. You're not trying to go pick up one. And then you're gonna need your form to so forth to, to, uh, for, for your revenue keeping and so forth. I can tell you and we, uh, me and Greg Seemack, member of the planning commission, went to interview Ross Common Township who has an ordinance. And Marky Township, um, both are very positive about the ordinances, um. At the time, Ross Common, the officer was struggling a little bit, he was, he was wrestling with some non-compliance and stuff. Um, Christie, um, Christie Ruchel, Marky. She was very, um, enthused and energetic about their system. Uh, she said it's working really well. She's having virtually no compliance issues. And, uh, and then some of the reason was is because if you mess up, you lose your license. And obviously, this is a pretty good source of revenue for the rental. Um, but the ultimate, the way it's written, from which I understand it from my review, is it gives the township the ability, regardless of how many licenses you consider. First off, it's not an absolute, um, ban, currently the way it's written, and that it gives ultimately the township the ability to revoke said licenses to be able to operate if you are the violating parties that are causing some of the what I call negative effects to the community. This is it. And it's a, it looks like it's police power written, is that being, yeah. Is that all correct?
Yep.
Okay, um, you have the ability to, uh, limit the number of licenses. Uh, you could look at zoning areas, say, say R one. High-density subdivisions and say, we're not gonna allow so many licenses in this area. So it's pretty open. You have control over, uh, the number, as you'd say. Um, one of the concerns was inspections. The way the ordinance is set up, the owner of the rental has to sign an affidavit saying that they complied with the ordinance. With that all the conditions. And that's it. I don't think the township needs to go inspect it to see if they did that. But if a complaint comes through, obviously you're gonna trigger an inspection and that's when you enforce the ordinance like that, I mean, you will decide how you wanna proceed from there. So they put the onus on them to comply. And, uh, the other things you gotta remember is if they are listed with Airbnb or VRBO, Mirreal. Those rental agreements, those companies are pretty strict with the renters. Again, they have guidelines they expect them to follow, meet the local ordinances and so forth. They'll do a lot of the enforcing for you, because if they get complaints through their system, reviews and stuff. So, you know, the enforcement, I think, is really gonna be hard to handle. Well, that was some of the concerns. The board on the police department side of things, um, in the previous, when you had these other nuisances. Uh, we did find that, uh, that some of the landlords, try to say, um, or managers didn't even know those things had occurred. And so we filled in that blank out wraparound.
Or managers didn't even know those things had occurred and so we filled in that blank on wraparound. And then they contacted uh, we are the owner, we could be the, put the pressure and they, they haven't looked up. I don't know how to do it. So people will kind of miss like, hey, we're not, you don't rent to these people because they brought the problems that we have. But there's some enforcement help on that. So I think we'll hear what you're saying.
Yeah, there's a network there that.
Sure.
You have to hold in some of that. Um, one of the advantages our township has over some of the other ones is we do have a police department. There will be a police department. Well, they're the ones that will probably respond. If the response is necessary. Question, Tom, before you get too far up. You said that there was. You could have, you could limit the number of licenses by zoning district. Is that, does that understand the right?
I believe you could, you know.
Okay, if that's true, would it be this, would there be just one ordinance? An ordinance couldn't be defined district to district, different from one district to another district that's put.
No.
So the same, same ordinance, just the number of, what you're saying, just the number of licenses per district each change.
Yeah, our premise is that. The one ordinance would cover all the properties in the county commercial, no, no matter what the, you know. District is, they would be allowed everywhere at this point. So then it would be up. To also be able to decide if uh, if we need to restrict some in certain areas. With the exception of a.
But you, you know, you got to come up with your reasons. That's just was to make it up. You could have uh, R ones, uh, more. Regional recreation could have an unlimited number of licenses. I'm just making this up. And lakefront properties, a lakefront gone might be limited to fifty licenses. Awesome. That's, that's how you would, you could distribute and you could control the amount. That's a very practical example, but that it could be done that way.
I mean, I would personally want to probably go along the street that had five rentals and, and there I, you know.
Yeah.
You're just looking at the density levels.
Would you control that though? Something.
You know, I. I came into this late on planning mission because I like the, run the. So the, the graph in this was already garden. Um, and I read several articles that are pro and. Against the, the idea of. Ordinance was like this. You know, and I looked at it and I see three groups that are affected. You have the customer that rented the, the facility, the owner, manager of the property and then you have the. Neighbors that have the property of. Um, you know, the way I see this is, you know, the customers are already taking care of. Going through their contract with whoever. So if they go in there and the. Whatever this, they rented isn't what they thought it was supposed to be. They're rep, you know, a percussion there with. The property manager or the, our VRBO or whoever they're with. And the property owner is already. They have a contract with them and when they own the property, I can see this really, this ordinance is. Really designed to protect. The adjacent property owners. So that's, I think that's where the need is, that at least for money. And, you know, this is a question comes to why, why should we have, do we, do we just not do it or should we? Move forward and have it. Um, you know, I've seen this letter that was from the system of insurgency.
Yeah.
In favor of having an ordinance. Is that who I read that? And um, by conversation with people that. Are next door to existing uh, properties. When I posed that question about it, yeah, it was very overwhelming that they felt something needs to be done. So, you know, that has, I see that as the real premise of why we have this or considering this, is. For the adjacent property owners, as Tom just said. I would not want to live next door to something like that. Um. This neighborhood changes every, the dynamics every, every week when somebody else shows up. And uh, and even from a personal standpoint. Um. We happened to rent a place out of order at the time and showed up and they were pulling the cushions off the roof of the house. Do you remember that? That's so, so many, let me have a good time uh, when they, when they left. And so that's. That's number one and I, I, my, from my perspective, the other is. You know, you talked about administration of this and uh, I look at it as like the eighty, twenty rule and ninety, ten rule. The. Most people are going to be respectful. There's, it's that twenty percent or ten percent that show up that. Put twelve people in a one-bedroom cottage and overrun it and then the neighbor has to go it up with. With that and then of course then there's the enforcement. Um. I, I question. One thing is about whether we have to put a limit or should we put a limit? If we crave this ordinance, do we, do we even need to put that? Well, the natural. Flow of things occur. And if we do to put a limit, then I think we got to come up with a number that. That at least encompasses the existing ones because if we don't, we're going to run into immediate litigation of some sort. Um. The last thing, uh, because I meant to note to is uh, that we didn't necessarily consider, but it was brought up. In our meetings before we even had a chance to roll this out, we had uh. Somebody show up at our meeting plus write a letter regarding their situation where they. Have a rental within their homestead. And in that particular case, I looked it up and they do have a P R E or principal residence exemption. Thinking that we do want to encompass in this document ordinance. An except, exception for properties that the homeowner lives in. So. Example, I have a phone that has a addition on it and talking to the assessor. That with those limitations, it doesn't affect your P R E. And they're utilizing that some part of the summer or part of the year is, is a short-term rental. The, the issues that come up with neighbors and stuff may not. Transpire and I'm either, uh, what I'm thinking we should consider is even. Putting a fee exemption on the people that have P R Es is affecting very many of them. And or just exempted from the whole thing as it is. You could still make them still meet the requirements if they're on a private road to have. Approval of the neighbors, whatever else is listed here that not necessarily. Have a fee structure on there because they're not utilizing it in the form that's kind of generating a lot of revenue. Probably that could create the sort of problems that are created on the ones that somebody bought someplace and it's. It's a residential property, but they're running it commercially because they're basically renting it out weekly. Those people are in there for a buck. It's not. The sort of bed breakfast type sort of thing that we're talking about. Um, this is something that we might want to consider if, as this board to put back to the planning commissioner just. Make the change or consider anyways at this level.
In, in my um, research. It's a township. I can't remember, it's very traverser, acne and, and their short-term rental agreement, they had the two classifications. Where the owner lived at the rental and then where the owner was absent. Basically. All the requirements were the same for each type of rental. It did have a few exclusions or differentiation just because the owner was there and it was mainly um. The ordinance looked at, that was a benefit to have the owner there because if something happens, the owner's there where. When the owner's absent, something happens, now a contact's got to be made and, you know, it just adds more steps to what. Responding to an issue or.
Yeah, we, we.
So it is addressed, it can be addressed.
Yes, I, we have a few residents like that and I know a way out top of that. Ever, it's the same financial help comes back every year forever and the lakefront. Uh, place, places that I know of. You know, obviously that, I'm sure that's how they're helping the property taxes. But they're there and there's constant supervising of it. Uh, and that is a little bit, um, you know, certainly it's something you can use just as the home. Um, and, and using it again personally out there. I feel everything you could said, you're like, I spend the same way and I think we have to answer those questions. Um, Jimmy mentioned residential events and maybe that is something we need to look at. And, you know, before you just put a cookie cutter. Across top, because I know I hate cookie cutter legislation. Always have. Uh, there's always victims in it. I mean. If there's a chance to look at that and then you see it, and I don't have any idea what I'm talking about. And you know, and other than, you know, residential events, you uh, you know, most any thing. So I know the plan is not.
Challenge the planning commission to find out how to crack that language to get it into the ordinance. And still comply with the rules of, um.
And I do believe, my opinion on the limitation, I believe. There should be a number that it's allowed. Um, and I also agree that if they're already doing it, you can't take that away from them as long as they meet the criteria and the licensing piece. But. If we're at a higher number than what we want to be right now. Um. Called through.
You're behind, you're behind the eight ball. You asked a question, but I admit, when I got this stuff in March, I. I said, I need to talk with an attorney because I'm concerned about a grandfather situation. I was assured. That there is not a grandfather piece of this.
But even if you did.
Had a hundred and forty-four to restrict it to fifty, that, that grandfathering would not apply to this. Um, Jimmy, you were there in the game, Tom, you were too, with, with our attorney and. Because that would have been my.
As they follow up being rentals, then you just don't replace them, like you don't allow another license to be had?
That could be a logical, involve light in the sand. The problem with the light in the sand is. I, Tom, you've done the work. I did the work as a police chief five years ago. I came up with uh, uh, seventy and identifying the residences that I knew off the, whether it was Facebook, Airbnb, VRBO. Oh, that I could send out notices to all these people about D A sixty-six, or I did all that work. I'm confident there were more than seventy when I started that five, six years ago. I'm confident that that one forty-four number probably is more accurate to where we sit today. Wait two more years and you might get two hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
Uh, just depends, the economy is, you know, people are going to, how do I save my house? I mean, my second place and. And, and certain rentals are going to, which I can hope that people will. Uh, through health economy or the rest of that. So it's a, it's a matter of inaction or action. And, and the last five, six years, I know this has been banted about, you know, about, hey, what do we do? We suit with Marky. We see it with that, we see it with Lake. Um, but anyways, our debt, I think, yeah, that went into it, yes. And so Vera, she kind of sat by and took a look. And the posture of that, I can tell you, because I was part of. Uh, as a police chief, I had conversations with the previous supervisor. I was waiting to see whether the state was getting involved in the game. And about December of twenty-three, I believe it was. It went through the court and the court said, yeah, no, this is the local zone, it's true. And uh, and, and so then at that point it became, well, then we, we probably ought to get this out, out in the center and we start. Take, when I came in at twenty-four, I said to Tom that, you know, short-term rentals probably been sidelined long, you know. Well, it definitely was twenty-three, December twenty-three, when that court case came out. And the state said, we're not going to get involved because typically it's a local issue, surprise, surprise. That is state, uh, and uh, in, in this, we have a consultant. So that's how we got to where we are. So we, we watched and watched what they did there, wanted to see why they did it. And the results of those things. Uh, I did contact supervisor, uh, Eric from Marky and theirs was primarily driven by parking and off-street parking pieces. And of course, the usual, I, you're saying ten percent, I, I might say maybe five or less percent of those can just all be with. Their folks and whatever. Anyway. And so it's the, the abuses are what always grinds things for the masses. And that's a shame, uh, and but, so that's how we got to where we're at and. I, I feel somewhere you, you know, on, on, on your, for those concerns, but I would also, I vote the. Hence, happy.
Well, it's a little different when you're on a sixty-by-eight block and it's right next door.
If we're going to consider. Limitations, we need to consider criteria for how, why, why, what's the justification? Why? Are we going to set it at one fifty or fifty or two hundred? Or. Or, you know, set it up within zones. And uh, but I, I am confident that. And then the other issue too, they're getting this document, I assume everybody's read.
That's right.
That if somebody's on a private road, that they have to get approval from the, the neighbors. Have that. And so that, that too. And that may create some interesting responses with. If somebody's already got one and if somebody's now has the opportunity of neighboring their, to botch that. So, uh. I guess that's all I'm, I'm saying that we do, this is definitely designed, I think. The surrounding properties, I think, really is not. Going to have very little effect to the other two principles in this endeavor. Um.
Well, it does, it does promote. Safety. Yeah, for the rent.
But I can point it out, if they're going through a map. Like fail or platform, they usually have certain, you know, there's a way for people to complain and make. Get their money back or, you know, get things uh, rapid. Um.
I mean, just the residents got to have certain safety, they've got to, they've got to be that, there's everything you would find in a hotel, a motel. It's that, if you're renting a property, it's going to be safe.
Yeah, sometimes you gotta tell all of this, I hear it should be at the beginning, which we did the long-term rentals. Um, you get those that are above the twenty-eight day inkeeper uh, situation or short-term rentals should you get them together, you know. Um, and uh, and that was all driven by safety. Uh, we had, we had rental where you walk in the front door and they have multiples in the floor. Uh, and that's, once again, it's the usual few percent of the projects that are asked. Uh, and so there is for the public there, there's section nine under safety requirements. So I'm kind of confused. I want to. At least. Today, I mean, at least Scott, what's the. We're all articulating things. Um, what's the avenue? Do you take that back to the planning commission and then? Say this is what we want addressed or mounted in. Um, there, there's an A through F in here, the safety requirement. And that's, and I agree, I think they're saving. I think they've done a great job. For pulling one together, to be honest with you, that, that very good job. So what's up? What's next?
I'm going to maybe the town for experiences.
That's probably the last thing you wanted to hear is bring it back.
In some ways, we need some public input.
Yeah, you know.
I don't, I've never. Uh, found the report set from this, that, 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 that. I, you know, that, there's, there's a process and I, you know. Most of the time you'd see public hearings, they're here, whatever they say. And then if it's not sufficient to make a change, it is before, but you still had to have them saved. But there's also a possibility of, I don't know the process, but, but put it out. Get the feedback, uh. Whether it's with the hearing or not, and then allow us to consider, see if the feedback's coming back to the system with what are concerned there. Then go back to the planning commission because I don't, unless we are resolute about what we want. To go back, it's not fair to put it back to that commission and not have a very defined, here's what we want. And so I don't.
So here we, here we, what was they given to us? We had some discussion on it.
Yeah, exactly. You know, you're thinking you want to get it implemented, implement it and then yeah, see what's not working. Um regarding licensing, um my thought is um you should have just one fee number for everybody. Regardless if they're only running two weeks a year or not. I mean, as a builder, if I build one house, I still gotta have all my licenses. Yep, okay. To me, if you're renting, you're gonna meet the ordinance, just you back to the license fee.
What about P R E?
In other words, you don't make it overcomplicated.
Yeah, but why are we doing this? But A R E didn't? Is this the first time anybody's talked about that, like even the planning permission?
Yeah.
We have been talking about P R E because of that issue that you were explaining.
Well, actually, we did review it. I went through that with your first transfer on what type of order and put it on review and decided that we did need that separate classification at this point. So if you find out you got a panel, you might want to change the ordinance to, okay, I'm getting it, but.
All right, very good. Well, I think we can beat it to death. We'll talk to him on Monday. This is not something happening tomorrow, obviously, but it's something that I think uh from here so far from everybody here, it's not that we never do anything, we just have to be sound again. And um and to move forward on this issue that I talked about now for five or six years. Um and I I don't want it to be majorly unprecedented, I want to be able to at least put some sound into it. Sounds? I think that's a wrap. Sorry, you're in the way. Word on the game question? Audience, as I promise.
You have a question?
Yep, well, just a minute. As soon as Tom vacates his seat. Unless you want him to answer it or?
Well, it might be just as well. Everyone stay there. My question is, so Jim's point was, so who's gonna do the next set of revisions? And so I think that's important to establish.
Yes.
If the board has certain concerns, then I think that they should be given to the planning commission and we'd like this included.
Yes.
Rather than just say the planning commission. So and I I think you need to plan what your steps need to be to to bring it forward, because otherwise it could be, you know, I I don't like the inaction, um you know, step. If there's action that can be done that moves it forward, so.
Yep, correct.
I'm with you.
I'm with you.
Okay.
Okay, if you haven't heard out by now, I'm a process guy. And I promise a process here uh for everybody and we'll make sure that we get it and I I and I want to respect that planning commission and the work that you guys have done, they're exceptional.
So the one other point that I would make, it might be part of what your decision processes and Jim brought up, but whether it may not have a bit of licenses, but was spoken fairly strongly by the people that Tom and I talked to, that you want to have a set number. Because if you don't, what happens is when you ask people to comply, they just won't. Because they'll figure that I can always get one. If you have a number, then the people want to make sure they're in the number.
Sure.
So they'll comply with that. So I think that's important. The other thing I would make out is if this was not, the townships that we talked to, this was not a loser money wise. They were fairly satisfied with the fact that they were able, it was a it was a positive rather than a negative to the township in order to set it up and work.
Right, it shouldn't cost.
I think that's important.
Bert.
I would like to talk to the board.
Right ahead. Come on up and have a seat right with Tom. I want to let Tom know.
Thank you.
Did a green light on?
Yes, it is.
All right.
My name's Herb Weatherly. Most of you know me. I live on Kennedy Trail, which is right behind the township properties. There's our property, but the township property. We get to our homes back and forth by a single track private road that we have to maintain ourselves. I knew that there's discussions going on about short term rentals rentals. But I only found out that I was gonna be personally involved two days ago. When I found out from a neighbor that a property we knew had sold, it's the second one from the north end, was advertised on the B R V O website. So I looked it up myself, but sure enough, there's a picture of the property. It says it sleeps sixteen. And that the rental is twenty-five hundred dollars per day. And that includes the both. Now, from my own standpoint, when I hear somebody's gonna cough up twenty-five hundred dollars for a day, they're gonna wanna party pretty hard to make up for their investment. And I can see it's gonna be extremely disruptive to our neighborhood. And especially our road and our quiet neighborhood in the evening, when they'll wanna party all night long when they pay twenty-five hundred. If that wasn't bad enough, then they found out the net property right next door to me is also sold and it's listed on a different website and I haven't accessed that property yet, but I understand that the people have advertised it and uh they're attempting to get people this rent there too. And all I've contacted four neighbors now and all of us are extremely concerned that it's gonna be very, very, very disruptive to our neighborhood all night long. And so I'm concerned about your progress with this ordinance. Obviously, we needed the only real good thing that would be for us if you didn't allow any. I don't think that's possible, but.
It fits ship to sail. Unfortunately.
It's it's gonna be very, very bad and I'm sure we're gonna have to have Eric there. What have you done?
This is not a private road.
We have a private road that we all own a piece of. And all the maintenance is done by us. The commission doesn't have any part of any of the maintenance. We have to plow it in the winter times. We have to repair it in the summertime.
But you might like this ordinance the way it's written then.
Well, I I heard you say that and I'm extremely hopeful of that. And then it passes legal. Uh because we are very, very concerned. It's been a nice, quiet neighborhood. We've all gotten along very well. We haven't had any trouble. We haven't had Eric down there that might acknowledge at all. And we'd like to keep it that way.
Yeah, it's quiet.
But what's advertised doesn't sound good at all. When the neighbors that I've contacted, the four of them, everybody is dead set against it.
They're all good. Appreciate you. Thank you much.
Very good.
Mr. Weatherly, how many houses are on your road?
Fourteen. When when you you said houses, let's talk properties.
Okay.
Fourteen properties. Uh I have a guest house. My next door neighbor just erected one a couple of years ago. So you can add those too.
Okay.
But all our properties are one piece. Include mine and including the one next door has two homes on it, but it's one piece of property and it was sold that way.
Thank you.
Thanks, Herb. Thanks, Herb.
Yep.
Anybody else? Bob, you want to come up?
Yes. So I don't know if you guys saw this. This is from Island's magazine. April first, twenty twenty-five. Do you see it?
I'm not.
But I got reprinted in the prepress too. One of the most gorgeous island inland lakes is a recreational escape with miles of scenic shoreline. Higgins Lake is one of the most clearest, most beautiful lakes in the world. I'll send it to you. Higgins Lake is Michigan's hidden gem for outdoor recreation. It's a long article. Goes about the twenty-one miles of beautiful shoreline. And to your point, Brian, ten years ago, then maybe then twenty. There's a hundred and forty-four now, according to this other website. So again, twenty-five hundred bucks a night next to her. This is a real big problem. And our neighbors um uh a few doors down down the line. And the parties, well, when you're paying twenty-five hundred bucks a night, you don't care. I mean, you'll, I mean, you're buying the property for the party. And it's not just one family. When you have a big house, you get a lot of families. So I think the uh you're on the right track. To get an ordinance, but sooner the better. And I think the first thing to do would be put a moratorium on any more uh short term rentals. And um but sooner the better would be really, really valuable. We we know it's the most beautiful lake in Michigan. We know it's the sixth most beautiful lake in the world. And as far as protecting our lake and and the future of the lake, I think um turning it into a commercial resort area is gonna be detrimental to the community, to the future of the the whole area. And yeah, you'll have a lot of money coming in, you'll have bigger houses and you'll have a uh uh a commercialization of the lake that we really don't need. That's my story.
What's this thing I need, right?
Thanks, Bob. Jim, or excuse me, anybody else out there have any, step right forward, come on up?
It's just brief, but I'm Patty Hayes, I'm a neighbor of ours. We've been there uh years and years.
Can you plug here? Because people on Zoom can't hear anybody that doesn't use that microphone.
Thank you.
We're trying to rectify that for the future, though.
I understand. I'm Patty Hayes and I'm on Kennedy Trail as well. And my concern is um that the numbers are multiplying at such a rapid pace. The uh commercialism is out. The word is that Higgins Lake doesn't have an ordinance on this side. Just this side, us there. So the ordinance has to get done and it has to get done soon. Three of our twelve homes in one season. And they're large homes and small homes. So even the partiers are out doing the partiers. And the big ones are now having multi-families. In addition to having the resort opportunity and just utilize our beautiful lake, they're having events. So come to our wedding, because we can sleep sixteen here, we can fill up the motel down there. We can rent the neighbors and then they can send to a neighbor. And then there's an event. Can you imagine the trash or traffic? It's a one lane road. So in speaking to just our side of the lake, it's happening all the way down to Park to Park really. And the word's out. We don't have an ordinance. Come to Gairish Township. We have to do something. Thank you.
Anybody else? I hope you two all.
You have somebody on Zoom, Brian. I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry. I'm just trying to be patient because I'm not there and can't see who's raising their hands, but I do have something to add. So I am a short term rental investor is what I would, I suppose, classify myself. Um and I do have multiple of these across the United States. Um I do have one in Higgins Lake as well. And so I am um just wanted to propose a couple um things that I have at my other properties that help protect your guys' community, because I do um live locally, I'm roughly thirty minutes from you guys, so I know what it's like to have a quiet lake house in the back with no, you know, parties and excessive uh guests. Uh I do have to say that I appreciate the planning commission and the board's um thoroughness and that you guys have I can see you've spent some time in discussing this. And so I thank you for that, because as an investor, I do believe that regulation uh helps our industry and our market. I am not against any type of regulation whatsoever. And I think that if you're a legitimate investor, somebody who is running one of these properly, then you should be for some sort of regulation in keeping, you know, everyone playing on the same playing field. So um with that being said, I know that noise has been one of the number one complaints I've seen of people and that they do have um systems that are noise ordinance related that you can put in the backyard of these rentals. Um and it records a decibel. If a party is getting out of hand, then it reports to like an app on my cellphone so that I can notify the guests at my home that says, hey, you know, the decibel is above what is supposed to be there and you guys need to quiet it down. Um so that hopefully that prevents, you know, neighbors from having to be the bad guy and saying, hey, you guys need to calm down or call, calm down, or they have to call police in to or, you know, regulate your ordinance. So I would recommend maybe making something in this ordinance that a sound machine is to be installed in the um backyard to regulate the decibel of noise coming from these rentals. And then another thing is if the uh permit uh amount isn't enough to supplement the township to help pay for this, because I agree, I don't think any small township should have to uh suffer any burden or any loss as people are getting twenty-five hundred dollars a night and cash rolling off of these is a possible tourist tax. Um there's a lot of these townships and a lot of or um tourist areas that regulate a tourist development tax off of these rentals. It's typically five to six percent of the booking that goes into either the township or the county to help enforce, um you know, your ordinance and help uh you know, maybe it's extra police presence, whatever that may needs to be, or uh developing roads or anything for traffic related things that you guys have concerns about. Um I also had some of the same concerns as some of the board members on like uh you you know, the proof of consent uh of consent from neighbors with private roads, if it's a one lane road that makes it difficult. Uh and the other one was, you know, how many do you plan to issue? Uh and what about existing rentals, which I think you guys covered pretty well and that you guys are working on getting kind of answers from that. Um so I look forward to hearing more from the board on what they're doing and I'm I as a an investor, I'm happy to follow anything that I've already seen in your guys' um listing. I think if you're a legitimate investor, uh you know, the home we purchased is a one and a half million dollars. I'm not putting that amount of money into an investment to have people come to my property and destroy it or destroy the lake that I also grew up on, coming up and camping at South Higgins Lake uh State Park very many or many, many of my weekends. Um so I'm happy to, you know, uh you know, follow your ordinance and do whatever you guys need to do to get those permits done. Um I do think we have a larger issue at the South State Park with the amount of people that come in through the holidays. I've been there quite a bit and seen the fights and I've seen the partying and if you want to know something that's hurting our lake, I believe that's the step one of is rectifying that versus short term rentals, but I do believe some sort of an ordinance needs to be done.
Very good. Thank you, Ashley. Um I know they're out of here all over. Ashley, do you have uh did you, let me give you a uh email address?
I did email and I appreciate, uh Michelle, you were very thorough and the um information that you got me and led me to this meeting, so I appreciate that.
You emailed the clerk?
Yeah, that was a week or so.
We have, we have your contact information.
Yes, yep. I I can send off an email as well, just to uh bring it up in the top of your list, but yeah.
Michelle says she has it.
Perfect. And yeah, I'm I I'm happy to work with you guys on any other regulations that are across the I have one in Florida, one in Vermont. Um so I I've got properties that have ordinances put into place and and rules that we have to follow. And I think if you're a legitimate investor, then this should be no problem, including, um I forgot to talk about this, but like proper insurance um for for these type of issues and things. I think that there should be some sort of a level of insurance that is required by people when you put these into place. Um you know, so things to talk about, I'd be happy to to meet with the planning commissioner or the board. I plan to be at the Tuesday meeting as well. Um I just couldn't make it for work reasons for today, but um yeah, I appreciate you guys and all the hard work you guys are putting into putting an ordinance into place.
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you very much for your time. Anybody else in the audience? All right. Uh thank you all for your input. Again, I hope everybody still has uh your your passion. Uh for those of you that think that we absolutely ought to have one, I got a feeling that there's but a good percentage who think we should. Um and at the end of the day, we need to hear both sides of this very well. Please don't lose your passion as we uh go through this. Well, thank you very much for that. Uh Jim, helpful of Higgins Lake, a brief highlight?
He said very brief. Um we had our kickoff meeting um last week. Um assigned the committee chairs who have since uh taken off and they have scheduled meetings um of their main members and they've got the ball rolling and um uh they've all taken off with the with this best interest in in moving forward. Uh we talked yesterday about uh the I, now I've been working on the I T piece about the the uh computer and how we're gonna deal with that, but we said something about that. Steering committees met, chairs have met, I mean, we're just on our way, so I just, you know, spent a long day and I don't think I need to. Yep, but too much more.
Getting a meeting or to see how they may do.
I think for the more, I think we're all of them have got a face to face meeting scheduled or will have um now plus the email communication I see back in Florida, so. Go with it.
All right, very good. Uh I think your next step as well, uh on the uh this kind of a high level of the cemetery uh and the board direction, we've done an incredible amount of uh physical work on the site, I'll tell you, the layout and that type of thing, and giving the board uh a very bit of information moving forward as we look to open the intersection and what that will look like and and also providing some presentation pieces as well on different areas. So go ahead.
I took the the ordinance, they took the ordinance and um went through and put my take on a bunch of or on a fair amount of uh what I thought were more formatting and um word smithing, I guess, if you will, for a lot of, but then there's a few things that I added into it. You should all, I hope we've got a copy. Did I send it to you all?
Yes, you should. All of us, sir.
Okay. So one of the things we wanted to add into that that was not in the in the last ordinance was to deal with cremains. So that's something that wasn't in before, so I added in some verbiage to get started on that. It probably needs some more editing. Um but identified uh the, first of all, the size of the cremains lots and some verbiage about how they should be dealt with. Um once again, I did a fair amount of word smithing to it, so the other document had some formatting problems in it and I think I've got those pretty well fixed. Um there's a piece on the size, identifies the size of the burial lots in an infant burial lot and a cremains burial site. I'll gather together in one spot now. And as far as the ordinance goes, it got printed down to at least one of the things that's a little bit of an division issue. I added in under under interim regulations. Says all graves shall be located in an orderly and neat appearance within confines of the burial space. And I had it as an option one, Gairish will allow and this is just the first draft that's so believe me.
Exactly.
Gairish will allow only burials Monday through Friday from nine AM to two PM at their standard rate. Burials are allowed on a limited basis on Saturday between nine AM and two PM for additional fee. Some day burials are not allowed. Option two, that's I think option two, Gairish Township Sexton may grant to a third party, which would be a funeral home, a third party interim vendor permission to conduct burials at the cemetery after hours and on weekends upon satisfactory completion of training by the Sexton and demonstration of adequate knowledge of policies and procedures regarding after hours burials. The training will be at the discretion of Sexton and a condition of any authorization for after hours burials. This permission will be granted on a annual basis after a policy review of the third party. All paperwork associated with any after hours burials must be completed prior to or within two business days of the burial. Fees for after hour burials are indicated on the fee schedule. Um I think that's controversial, but so we either want to talk about now or want to take away, how how much time you want to spend on this today?
Well, being alike to the meeting, uh what I I think what I'd really like to do is board has, you've given them plenty of information. And I think they would, you are the liaison in the issue of sending their concerns to you and perhaps we'll bring that packet back in July at the work session with the changes or concerns or identifying if that remains a concern or doesn't. And 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 maybe put that, bulk that up, you know, so it gets a fair amount of time. You can have it on your desk for there, so. Not a lot of time. And so and of course, the fee schedules got to be discussed uh and and you've done some work on that. I know Mary Ann uh did some show there and all the surrounding townships and counties, if you will, there. And Michelle, I know you have been really spend some time too. And uh then so we're gonna need to, you know, take a look at those, digest them and go from there um on this piece and um if if nobody on the board minds, is that that approach, is that okay?
I'd be more comfortable with that.
Uh I don't want to devalue Jim's working.
No, not at all.
I'm here, I'm here with a pretty big, you know, so. We can continue on. That's where I should have been.
I don't have enough time on on reading through this. I, thanks.
There there's a couple of things in there that
Yes.
gonna raise an eyebrow, so you know, it's be a change from how they're doing and we usually see a chance to look at it. Uh with regard to the cemetery layout, I don't know, was there something that we just sort of big this? The one that I pretty much what I what I gave to you before, um it's, it provides lots now for the next fifty years. And um and I, but I think it's the way to deal with that piece of township property is to get a master plan for the whole thing and this is what we should do.
Yeah.
Um it not to say that some more down the road can't change that a little bit, but at least it gives you something that this will require, this work right here would require renumbering of what we've done too. And um that would be kind of another piece of project. Um with regard to how the administration of this ordinance is dealt with at the here in the office, um we have some, have had some discussions about that and um I think that the the ordinance itself resides in the clerk's office. And then the clerk's office then would assign much of the, as it is now, much of the actual day to day to the front office where people will walk in. That's the first person to contact and then they would, they would, the person at the front, the administrative assistant at the front office would would uh deal with the public when they came in uh per the policy. And then everything that that can be done under this rope is done by the administrative assistant here. And then if they need to see anything at all, it gets handed off to the Sexton, it gets off in this case to Tony. And they would set up a meeting with Tony to to um to go to the to the cemetery to locate the person that they're looking at, make sure that they really wanna, that they really want to purchase and then even take their whole field work. Um but at the same time, philosophically, the clerk's office owns this. And maybe I'm missing something, but I think all the policies that we've got are laying on someplace on. That we've got are land on someplace on the board, land outside the board. So the administration of the policy should be officially with the clerk's office. And the work handed off to the appropriate people. Now. I don't think Michelle necessarily agrees with me, but nevertheless, I just threw it in the line because you're good one. To get the ball rolling and we can table this as well. We can noodle it over and um and weigh in on it and we can talk about it in. July or next?
Yeah.
In July, let's go with that. If that's what you'd want, but that's that is a um summary of the stuff that I that I sent you. And um covers most of the. Most of the issues, like I said, that the. Of course, third party deal is is as a way to keep the Sexton and the township out of the weekend burials. Still accommodate a funeral home to be able to do a funeral on the weekend. A lot of townships don't do that. They're not available, but that's just simply the way it is. So that's what we think.
Yeah, but just this, because you gotta be scratching that real fast. Just just to kind of frame really quickly that like this, a lot of this uh. Looking at the cemetery, uh, we uh we're still, we're still surviving on a uh essentially for most parts of five hour a day. Custodian who is doubling as the Sexton. Um, and uh it it's there have been more and more with the changing in the nation uh world and perils and. There seems to be many more requests for these weekend odd uh three o'clock, two o'clock on Sundays. Which our custodian can't make. Uh, and then we have a backup person and then. Like most of us, we are either not here on the weekend or not available due to whatever. And it it's causing some some strike, if we will, um with with the township being able to provide. And at the end of the day, the cemetery is the township. You know, people might need lots to that, but. Um, so that's why we're looking at this. Plus, this is a logical time because we're looking at new new sections uh being opened. And we need to solve some of these and clean up some of the old ordinance language. Again, the process and so. Uh, Jim is a cemetery liaison and done a great amount of work on this. So with uh the board, how do you feel about uh us suggesting at the work session next month? Giving to a little more elevated priority so it can have some real good public discussion from our township. Well, yeah, we all do.
Absolutely.
Uh, one on one, but I but.
That's what I noticed.
Most people love to see the spirit debate on the issue of. If I if I do what you can do. Okay, very good. Jim, thank you. Uh, and so on number ten, we have here's township planning commission. We have two expiring secrets. Uh, that expire July first, twenty twenty five. Uh, statistically, uh, the supervisor actually is the one that asks the question of whether anybody wants to go forward for that. Uh, or wants to be considered. I contacted the existing folks, uh, which is Mike Perkey and Mike Bray. And both of them indicated to me that they were interested in being reappointed. Uh, and so um I would like to throw on the agenda for Tuesday night. Uh, individual appointments for another three years for those turks to that. Uh, because I think consistency is also important right now with our planning commission. Make sure that and. You know, when these things continue, they're familiar. There's a lot of things going on and uh. So are you focusing on turns or how? I gotta just put them forward. You you get to decide.
Yeah.
So shall we vote on Tuesday night?
Sure.
Uh, so you gotta, if you can do it, you can. Exactly. Do it at that time. Okay, perfect. We will do that. Uh, number ten, uh, the establish a health uh of Higgins Lake Special Revenue Fund. Invited to two twenty, which is an internal uniform chart of accounts. Jim?
Now, just to get a quick rundown, yeah, two twenty under the uniform issued a uniform charge that helps us about the fund number for late improvement. So made it logical to make that um for the health of Higgins Lake. Uh, right now, we have a budget in the general fund of twenty thousand dollars, which is really an arbitrary number we put in there this. When we passed the budget. But uh now the the health of Higgins Lake is now moving forward and the community's moving forward. Most likely, there's going to be some financial uh activity that's going to start happening. We probably don't want to have that in the general fund, so the logic is to. Create the fund two twenty health Higgins Lake within our our humps that we think gave you the town to it. Uh, we would allocate um. The twenty or a portion of that to the health of Higgins Lake for the moment, but literally transfer in there. So that's something to work with. And we would also need to establish a budget because there's no budget for that right now. So um my recommendation is that. Tuesday night, we create the fund, move. I would say right now it's a thousand dollars by motion and then create a budget. Uh, of. Whatever we think we might be spending this year. Um, it obviously is going to get amended as. If we get a grant or if we get uh outside donations or contributions to the fund, those ones that come in there, they'll go into that fund. And be expended there. So the budget will have to accommodate that as well, but at least. Those three steps need to occur Tuesday night to hit the ball rolling and then we can adjust. The budget as needed throughout the year based on whatever activities could occur.
What's what's the logic in that transfer and all of it? One thousand, we just move the ball over it. One people.
I, there is no, there's arbitrary and and because I don't know what to need to, but I also. You know, our general fund is the 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 large fund that we operate out of. If there's not a need to move the money. This year, then I'll do it. Uh, you know, I don't, there is a message I don't want to put out there that. Hey, we got twenty grand spent.
Yeah, no, no.
I want to know, I want to know there's a need and then we'll.
I was picturing help Higgins Lake money here and help things like money over here and why.
No, it's all gonna be in one spot.
Okay.
We we, when we set that twenty grand. We had the option of operating, if health age lake didn't really come to fruit this year, then uh we may spend some money. On whatever endeavors. Um, and we can utilize that line item, but really what we're in the ideal situation is now that it's up and going. Is to transfer, use that money, transfer it into that respective fund and then that'll be the boss. And revenue center for that activity. So uh the comment or question came up about contributions. The township is a subdivision of the state of Michigan and therefore. Uh, contributions by individuals to the township, whether it's for this or whatever. Is um tax deductible on your personal tax return, just like if it was paid to a five one C three. So we don't, we can't take contributions uh into that fund or to the township. The only thing I would tell you is that if somebody made a contribution and then. Put a specification on there of how it had to be spent. And that is not in line with what we're doing, then we would not want to take that money under a premise. If we could spend it in that way, that that's not what we were planning. Because you're making this kind of like a contractual obligation when you take that money. When the money comes into the township, it is now township funds falls under our statutory requirements. And the state of Michigan laws, so that that, you know, so we have to follow, it has to be budgeted. We have to vote on it as a board, you know, it's that it's not like a nonprofit. Uh, where it's a little bit more loose on the on the activity. So we have to follow, just like all the other house cables that we do.
Do we need something, some recommendations on a budget?
I could assist you in writing motion, but there'll be.
What I just wrote, I just wrote. CJ.
But it is basically three, three. We can do it in one, but there's three separate i- issues that need to be done uh for that.
And I think we need to write it in one because it's all.
Sure. Well, we do will do the, we can do two of them, but that uh budget of the town has to be. I I believe we need to make that separate, but it's up to. Anyways, that's my quick.
Board members question, Jim on that at all? Anybody got a burning question about trying to decode what he said?
Well, I did some, I just want to, I wonder some. So what you're saying is that. Um, there isn't a need for. Outside. Like the township is going to continue to oversee this.
Wasn't a separate five one seat. Is that question?
Yes.
No, there's not. The the that did, that did come up to me during the uh. After the helping is like meeting about we've got this five one C three out there. Um, the issue is is that this initiative is a township initiative. Uh, it's not to say that we can't contract with a five one C three, and I know the premise behind that is, let's say Dow will only give money to. A five one C three, they won't give it to a don't know entity. That bridge will probably have to be. Uh, you know, dealt with when they get there, but right now we're just getting moving forward. This is a township. Initiative, it's not uh you've. And there's potential other issues of li- aligning with the five one C three right now, uh, when we're so early in the stages. From maybe a legal standpoint and also from a pers- uh outside perspective, it's to. What is our intent and 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 so I think this is needs to be done. We could cross that bridge if we get to it. If somebody comes up and says, I got a million dollar grant, but it's only going to go through a. Five one C three. Well, yeah, but we definitely want to discuss that. I'll 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 check it might work, but. We gotta make sure that it lines up. Right now, we're so early in these stages about where we're going. If somebody goes up with a grant that's outside of the scope of what we've already discussed, should we? Be diverting at that point without. The, you know, due process of the health of Higgins Lake, you'll undermine that. So.
Nope.
We gotta take our steps as we go, but uh, yeah, that.
Okay, any further comment board on that issue? Or Jim, I thought about, I've got to make agenda this afternoon because we're on a tight turning round. It comes down, we're doing a work session or four or five days away from each other. Very close this month. Number twelve, um, we have been, obviously, we we um. We, me, Michelle and I met with uh Lincoln Financial. Uh, we had some prospective uh potential changes of. Who's managing our retirement accounts uh that had had some problems in the last several months. Uh, our current company is being bought by such a larger company, which is making it very difficult to. Uh, shall I say communicate or or with our clerk's office on a day to day basis with employees moving in, employees moving out and. Best thing in mind and and our own agent just having a difficult time with the company that we've had for about eight years now that was really. Good at the. So we uh we were looking to schedule, I just want to uh put this out there before I put it out there, that the board. Uh, due to timing with the agents and and the ability to hear this, June seventeenth at one thirty, board members, please make sure you have that on your. Your schedule there. Um, there's a special meeting. Um. There there's already two other uh timing timing pieces that are going to go, so we're gonna have minimum three items on that meeting at one thirty. Um, up to for you to hear and discuss. Yeah, just isn't yet, but it will be, but so anybody having problems making that date, June seventeenth, one thirty PM. This is now like the fourth, three months, then we've got about a three hour meeting in the morning and having to have another special just to get to things. And I do admit, part of it is me, I'm a I'm a mover, um, and so we. I think I I moved, put too many items out, but I think we need to move and go forward here itself. Uh, any further discussion on that, folks? Alright, enjoy. Please put that on your calendar. Would I open the rejected public time exception uh by anybody in the audience? Uh, at all or uh zoom? Yes, ma'am. You gotta come up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, Patty hate.
Patty hate.
It uh curious as to where the board stands on the. Clearcutting of the property behind the tennis courts and the police station. That's all I'm fond of.
No, it's never was clear cut, it's select.
Select, uh, yes.
There's no action on that or nor planned for at this time. Part of that all relates to, there's a thing called the Materials Management Act. That the state of Michigan is thrust upon. Uh, the last time the county actually. Has done the uh applied for the planning grant of sixty thousand dollars for the entire county. Uh, all townships are going to be required to have um recycling plans and. We're further ahead than most townships, Austin Township. Um, and I we currently right now, when you look at it. If you have a site already, the other townships, I think when this all gets run bad, are going to have to decide whether they're moving or not and stuff. Whether they're in a contract, the contract is going to require. Uh, we're not going to be able to take other future stuff. Other than we have over here. And so it didn't make much sense to go the select cuts or otherwise, if the side in the compost site has to get a vet partner. If that happens, we gotta get a different roadway in. Uh, or way into the compost site, we might have to do something off the common rail one hundred on the north side of the township property and. You know, come in, I don't know, and it's all up in the air. So anything I tell you now is complete speculation when we decided to kind of put a hold on that select cut piece.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Hold that.
Yes.
Um, anything else we got? No. Not here, did he? Uh, any other board announcements? Aaron Dunn had entertained a motion then to uh to adjourn the meeting at eleven fifty five. Uh, moved by the fifteen, uh, Osley.
But I'm done.
Ordered by Chairman Anderson. Any further discussion, boys? All those in favor, complete by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same motion, please. Thank you all for the setting with us for the three hours. And we can.
Appreciate the question.